This conference will now be recorded.
How many more days to Christmas?
Too many.
Well, thank you for coming. We'll call the speaking order. Mr. Paul?
Let us bow our heads. Gracious God, Father of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, we, humble servants, come with bowed heads and humble hearts. First of all, giving thanks unto you for Jesus Christ, your beloved Son, and the sacrifice he made on Calvary's cross. With that in mind, we want to say thank you for that sacrifice. Father God, we thank you for a reasonable portion of our health and our strength. We ask that you bless this council, the mayor, as they make decisions for the progress of Soudalia. Father God, we ask that you go with the fire department, the emergency medical staff, the police departments, as they do their duties from day to day. Father, strengthen us all in our weak places and build us up when we're torn down that we can be the servants that you're calling for in this last day. Oh, how good and how pleasant it is for veterans to dwell together in unity. Let us unify our hearts and our minds that we can be of assistance to one another. Bless this city. Bless this country. Bless all nations throughout the land and their leadership. In Jesus's precious name, we say amen. Praise the region, the USA, the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
And Foster, absent. And Bliss?
Here.
Now, we have a, we're going to have a public meeting. It's a public service we provide to constituents of Soudalia to further input in our strategic plan and budgeting process. Anybody have any input and would like to come forward? Apparently not. Did you say you wanted to come forward? So, we'll end that meeting. We now have, can you believe it tonight? We have some special service awards. Can't imagine. So, Chief, would you come forward?
Hundred and fifty-three, by the way.
Just in this room?
Just in this room is the occupancy load of the, for the building.
It's nice. There's normally about three people out in the audience.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Minister Shaw, it gives me great pleasure this evening to stand in front of you to present members of the Soudalia Fire Department who have reached a milestone achievement in their careers. As you see, it's a very big deal for us. The members you will see before you this evening have worked very hard to fulfill this step in their career path. Myself and the department cannot be more proud of each member that is standing, will stand in front of you this evening. These members have spent countless hours preparing for, training for, and dedicating a significant portion of their lives working to achieve these promotions. Promotional process is a lengthy and tough endeavor. Each member has to study for a written test, a proficiency test, projects, and interviews, all while still responding to calls for service and doing their other training obligations for the department. These members have stood out not only to the, in these categories, but are also standout members of the Soudalia Fire Department, and I'm very proud of each one of them. This evening, I wasn't quite expecting this many people. So, what I will do is, I'm going to call the first motion, which is Battalion Chief Kyle Gilmore. Kyle Gilmore will be pinned by his wife, and he may come up and, then your family, if they want to come with. Wife Devon, by the way. I had these real lengthy speeches, and then I was told just to cut them down because apparently there's football on tonight. So, I've already given their badges to them, so pin them away. I told them to pin them. The next three individuals that I'm going to call up are drivers, or were drivers, have promoted to the rank of captain. Nathan Dyceley, Josh Nelson, Zach Morales. These gentlemen spent many hours working as drivers. They were training this time in title officers. Tonight is the kind of a pinnacle of that. And their families, whoever's sending you. I'm going to try to move them in and out. You will notice that Mr. Dyceley is the only officer that has a white shirt. Due to the global pandemic, supply chains are very short on white shirts, go figure. So, they will be getting white shirts as soon as they come in from our supplier. I just, maybe after the first of the year. So, I gave you all your badges. Pin them away. Mr. Dyceley is being pinned by his mother Ronnie, Josh by wife Anna, and Zach Morales by daughter Harley. The next group of individuals are firefighters that have been working as drivers. The driver part is, the driver position in the fire department is pretty much the most important position in the fire department. These gentlemen are taking on a huge responsibility. Not only do they now do they have to work on firefighting, they also have to know where they're going in the city. They have to know all their addresses. They don't have to know what streets they're going to take. They have to know what streets are going to be closed. They also need to be able to work the apparatus once they get there. So, it's a very, very big job. So, John Clark, Colby Schnapp, Matt Mowden, Chris Maggert, and Jerry Peppin. If I could have you and whoever's sending you and your family come forward, please. John Clark will be pinned by Emily Callahan, Colby Schnapp by his wife Kimmy, and Matt Mowden by his wife Christine, Chris Maggert by his father, right? Jerry, and Jerry Peppin by Jessica Cooper. Anyway. Again, the driver's position is kind of the first step in their future endeavors with how they want to step up the chain of command.
Congratulations, everyone. And that's everybody outside of listening out. More than welcome to stay.
I'll tell them to be quiet while they're on.
Congratulations, everybody.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Aye.
Finances, voting?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, Travis T. Bliss.
Finance and Administration. First thing is the update that Don does, financial update, on a monthly basis, I think. Will it be good news or bad news?
We try to get good news every month.
Are we going to have coal, or do we get coal?
Do what?
Is it coal in our stockings, or are we going to?
No, it's still pretty good. Pretty good. The sales tax you'll see is up twenty-one point seven percent for the month without consideration of the park's one eighth cent sales tax for the Heckert Center. It would be up fourteen point three percent for the month. Use tax is up eight point five percent. Without consideration of parks, would be three point one percent. The franchise and cigarette taxes are down two point five percent. Transportation tax is up nine point one percent for the month. And overall, oh, sorry, property tax collections are down fifteen point eight percent for last month. And overall, the current monthly total is up seventeen point three percent. Year-to-date, up on sales tax, fourteen point five percent. Without consideration of the park sales taxes, eight point seven percent. Use tax is up nine point two percent. Without the park, would be three point seven percent. Overall, the franchise and cigarette tax is down two point nine percent for the year. Transportation tax is up two point, I'm sorry, twelve point two percent for the year. Property tax is up six point five percent for the year, and the fiscal year-to-date totals are up eleven point six percent from the prior year. Any questions? I'm assuming we probably want to track it separately. Would you agree? No?
We won't be able to.
You don't think?
Yeah, it just comes in under use tax. We won't know. I mean, well, I guess we can look in the details to see anybody that's not from, not in the city limits. It's going to, it would be very difficult to separate.
To separate? Thanks for putting me on the spot. Yes, it is good news. Any other questions?
We could look at the big players, like on Wayfair, those big players.
Obvious online. It'll be interesting to see how the reporting comes in. You know how they, you have a separate identification number for sales versus use? You don't think that they'll have a separate identification number that has to do with that? You think it'll just be a straight?
It'll come in under the use tax.
Okay.
But it does now, and anybody that has.
Collecting it, yeah.
They would also have the use tax.
Right. Right. Okay. Anything else? Okay.
Hey, Don?
Uh, any Lions here? Can you believe it? Well, take away Lions. Are you guys, you want to say something? You want me to start? Tom Reagan, Phil member? We deny your answer. I'm sorry. I was a Lion, so I had to tease the Lions a little bit. Well, it's, they're here to weigh the requirements of Code of Ordnance of Soudalia relating to the pub crawl. We've had great experience with the Lions in the past with regard to the zombie crawls, previous pub crawls, and they kind of set the standard for having a one-day event. And so, that's what this is about. I don't want to blow it for you guys, so let me get to my part and make sure I cover everything. Make sure everything that Kelvin wanted mentioned is mentioned, too. So, the club applies for permits necessary to close the streets for the celebration. Request before the council this time is to suspend the prohibition against open containers at this specific area for the time of the event under certain considerations. And this is what I was wanting to recall. Like the successful safe events in the past, they'll pay all police officers to provide security, ensure compliance with the conditions of the suspension of these laws. Open containers will only be allowed within the designated areas during specified times. In a special cup dispersed by the club, and people will be wearing wristbands. So, we know people have been checked. They're not going to be given a wristband unless they're of age. And so, call.
Any other questions? Any questions, council? Thank you for the great event you put on.
Yeah, I thank you guys for doing this event. But we have.
Lions are well organized. Was the zombie crawl successful?
How many zombies?
Arlene, will you read the ordinance, please?
Bill number twenty-two-one dash one-seventy-eight. An ordinance waiving the requirements of section four dash three A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Soudalia, Missouri, and imposing other conditions related to the Soudalia Lions Club pub crawl on Saturday, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, during the hours of twelve PM to seven PM in downtown Soudalia.
Second reading. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Your votes?
Bill number twenty-two-one dash one-seventy-eight. An ordinance waiving the requirements of section four dash three A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Soudalia, Missouri, and imposing other conditions related to the Soudalia Lions Club pub crawl on Saturday, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, during the hours of twelve PM to seven PM in downtown Soudalia.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
You're in. Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Public safety, Gina?
Public safety tonight has three items. The first one requires a resolution and an ordinance reading. Due to a medical condition, a citizen plowed into a vehicle used by the fire department for code inspections and command staff. The vehicle was parked at the time while the inspector was performing an annual inspection. The firefighter EMT was able to render emergency aid to the driver of the other vehicle, and at last report, he is now doing fine. While he regrets the incident, he is thankful that an emergency responder was right there to provide such professional assistance. The insurance company considered the city's vehicle, a two thousand and eleven Chevy Tahoe, a total loss, and they have paid fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, which is considered a fair market value. Chief Irwin has located a two thousand and nineteen Dodge Durango with nineteen thousand, five hundred miles on it that the Pettis County Fire District wants to trade for a pickup that will better serve their needs. This unit is already equipped with lights and firing, approximately two thousand-plus installation. The fire district has a hard offer of thirty-two thousand as trade-in for the truck that they are purchasing without the lights and firing. Therefore, they have offered to sell us the vehicle with the equipment left installed for thirty-four thousand dollars. Since this purchase was not anticipated and the budget staff is recommending approval of the purchase through a budget amendment to appropriate the funds for this replacement vehicle utilizing in part the insurance proceeds.
Counsel, do you have any discussion on the resolution for ordinance?
I don't know, chief. I don't know if that's how you spell a twenty-two Chevy Tahoe. No, I was just joking. Chief.
Inside bait call on who is what we're getting. So, anyway, Arlene, agree with resolution, please?
Resolution nineteen forty-six. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Soudalia, Missouri, authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two relating to the purchase of a two thousand and nineteen Dodge Durango for the fire department.
Motion to approve. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Your votes? Now, ordinance, please, Arlene?
Bill number twenty-two-one dash one-seventy-nine. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty-two-one, twenty-two regarding the purchase of a two thousand and nineteen Dodge Durango for the fire department.
Second reading.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Your votes?
Bill number twenty-two-one dash one-seventy-nine. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty-two-one, twenty-two regarding the purchase of a two thousand and nineteen Dodge Durango for the fire department.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
There's seven yes and one absent.
Our next item is in reference to the animal control truck box. Included in the current year's strategic plan and resulting budget for animal control services is an initiative to replace the vans used for patrol and transporting animals safely. The current vans are equipped with customized cages built into the specific model of van which renders them unusable once the van rares out. As discussed during the budgeting process, the placement proposed is to purchase a truck body and equip it with a box. This box is not only more efficient, it will likely outlast the truck and is removable so that it can be continued to be used on a new truck when that time comes, making it more financially responsible. The purchase of the truck has been previously approved by council and is nearing the delivery date to have the box mounted. Staff requested bids for the box and received only one. Animal Services Manager Randy Batson reviewed this company's product and is satisfied with their performance. Staff recommends award of a bid to Jackson Creek Manufacturing for thirty-five thousand, six hundred dollars.
Any discussion on the motion? Do we have a motion?
Tell Lou. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Your votes? Thank you.
Our final item for tonight is the Firefighters Retirement Fund Board of Trustees structure. The current Code of Ordinances designating the structure of the Firefighters Retirement Fund Board of Trustees includes by position the city attorney. Since we now contract out these services, staff recommends removing this position from this board's structure. The contracted city attorney will certainly continue to provide counsel to the city, including this board, but attendance at all meetings of the board is not necessary. Staff recommend approval.
Any discussion of this ordinance? Read the ordinance, please, Arlene?
Bill number twenty-two-one dash one-eighty. An ordinance amending section forty dash two ninety-four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Soudalia, Missouri, relating to the Firefighters Retirement Fund Board of Trustees by removing the position of city attorney from said board.
Second reading.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Your votes?
Bill number twenty-two-one dash one-eighty. An ordinance amending section forty dash two ninety-four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Soudalia, Missouri, relating to the Firefighters Retirement Fund Board of Trustees by removing the position of city attorney from said board.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
Thomas Oldham.
All right, five items, and I meet the Public Works Committee tonight. First one is a strategic planning presentation regarding water and wastewater from Public Works Director Brenda Argry.
Oh, hi. So, tonight, we have the water division and wastewater. So, the beginning and the end of that water is where we're at. The water division has been exceptionally busy this year. Just in general, what we do is we maintain the operating and distribution system permits with the Department of Natural Resources, which allows us to distribute public drinking water at the rate of thus far this year, one point, nearly one point three million gallons. So, we pump groundwater and process it into drinking water. We sample it, we distribute it, and then we maintain all the piping and pumping and booster stations, storage tanks, and towers, as well as wells, that generate that water and then the meters at each of those individual customers, either residents or business. And we do extend mains and install new service lines and fire service lines for any new residential or business customers in the community and outside the community with an annexation agreement. We maintain the fire hydrants and monitor for compliance with the sprinkler accounts, which also include an annual backflow reporting requirement through the State Department of Natural Resources. We currently have eighteen positions. Seventeen of those positions are now filled, which, knock on wood, it's very good to have that many positions filled, especially this time of year. And when we talk about wastewater, you'll understand why. But, the good news for this year, in two thousand and twenty-two, we did complete the two thousand and eighteen water system improvement. All the piping is done, all the valves are in place, all the hydrants in those areas have been completed, and we are now down to some sidewalk and finished dirt work in those areas. We still have some areas that in the spring will be checking on vegetation. But, all of those projects are now complete as far as the piping and the hydrants. The next thing, maintain and improve infrastructure to keep everything in good operating condition. We are an aged system, so we have had several pumps age out in the last eighteen months. So, we did award, due to a problem with finding maintenance staff, a pump maintenance contract that you approved about a month and a half ago. We have awarded replacement of high-service pumps at the filtration plant, as well as replacement of the associated VFDs on pumps four and five. And they had planned to have already started that work, but because of the delays logistically from those pump manufacturers, we're looking for those pumps to be in in the next week. We have been replacing the water filtration plant media. We did run into a problem with calcification. We have worked with Burns and McDonald and Bar to figure out how to prevent that from happening in the future. So, we're fifty percent complete, but they have been required to jackhammer that media from the filter beds. We have replaced the valves, the tee, and the pipe at the Main Street Tower last year. This time, if you drove down Main Street, you would have seen water leaking across the street. You won't see that this year. It is finished. We have replaced the well-starting assembly and cabinet at well eleven, as well as a solar project. We have rehabilitated well number fourteen. It has a completely new pump assembly and new pipe. And well fifteen has had new pump and new pipe also. We have repaired the pitless adapter on well number eighteen, and we have just completed the solar array projects at the filtration plant, well eleven, and at the Sixteenth Street Tower. So, in the coming year, to continue working on increasing and maintaining water pressure in residential areas. Over the last eighteen months, we have had a number of small water line improvements engineered and during, excuse me, the strategic planning process. In January, we'll be asking you for approval to move forward with construction on those lines. We are still trying to find alternatives on Winchester Road between Broadway and West Main, the Eastman Surf Build, and we're at a loss as to where we're actually going to put the replacement line. So, we're going to have to find a solution on that one. Filtration plant maintenance and repair. We have, going to start in January, working on an update to Windows two thousand and ten and the SCADA, which is manually managed within water. We do not have external internet connections to our water plant. Two backwash transfer pumps need to be replaced in the coming year. Air scour stainless steel tubing is needing to be replaced in the filter room, partially due to that calcification problem. And then, we need to change some air actuator. And then we need to change some air actuators from manual to electric on the finished water side to improve stability on flow as we continue to increase flow to the community. For well maintenance and repair, we are going to need to pull pump, the pump on well 18, the one we fixed the pitless adapter on. There is a problem. We've had a motor failure, and we cannot pump from well 18 at this time. And we have had several lightning strikes in the last two years on wells 11 and 12, so we're going to be looking at putting lightning arresters on those two wells. In '23, we want to continue to work on developing strategies and pay levels to retain workers. Both our water and our wastewater workers in the plants are required to be licensed. It takes several years to train and employ from a D license up to an A license, and as soon as we get someone trained, they're going off to another job. So we need to figure out how we're going to retain those levels of workers as we have to have A-level operators to operate the plants ourselves. And then we need to determine what is needed to repair the material lift at the filtration plant. Currently, we can only load material on the lift, but we cannot move staff, so they have to operate the lift remotely. And then we continue to work on how to get all the hydrants checked. We have been working with Burns and Mack as part of our master planning. They believe there is a way to meet the ISO requirement without touching every single hydrant every single year through additional flow monitoring. So we continue to work on that, and we are going to look at the universities as far as some summer interns to help us flush all the hydrants one year. We haven't had a lot of luck. Everybody is also trying to find those interns, especially the engineering ones. We are working this month to meet the WEA requirement, the America Water Infrastructure Act requirements for an emergency response plan update. We did submit the risk and resilience assessment on time on June 30, and we've got about a week's work left on the emergency response plan. Our next goal is to improve security, and that is in keeping with the America's Water Infrastructure Act, which we believe we need to add cameras to our existing plant. We have a couple of blank or blind spots, and we need to add cameras at the Main Street and 16th Street water towers and a door alarm at the 16th Street water tower. And then we are heavy into master planning and the hydraulic model. We will be coming to you at some time. We're not quite sure. It will be the end of January, first of February with the final report and some information about capital improvements and just general overall flow in the system. And I ran through that really fast because I saw how long the agenda is. Any questions?
Brenda, I have one question. I don't know if it would be with you or someone else, but we were talking about if an individual found a well on their property, that we would come in and fill that well in. Are we still doing that? Have we been doing that?
It's not wells, it's cisterns.
Cisterns.
Okay. Now, with wells, we can come out and help them, talk to DNR. It's likely going to be involved with well closure. But if it's truly, a lot of what we find in town are truly cisterns. They look like wells, but when we actually dig into it a little bit, we find out it's a cistern. So get us their names, and we'll go out and take a look.
So we're still doing that?
Yeah, we are. I believe we, from the time we refocused on this last year when COVID started, I believe we filled 30. Yeah. So, water pollution control. Thus far in 2021, we have processed 1.8 billion gallons of wastewater. We have maintenance on three wastewater treatment plants, the compost facility out on Route Y, are you? 187 miles of sewer collection lines, 2,275 manholes, and 16 lift stations. Did I miss anything, Bob?
No.
Bob is here tonight, and Bob's with Alliance. He's our operations manager in wastewater. We do operate a pre-treatment program for industry. We have six permitted industries. We have five that we continue to work with. We have just completed inspections on 80 restaurants, 57 automotive shops, eight car washes, and 17 demo offices under that program. Wastewater is responsible for complying with state and federal national pollutant discharge elimination system permits, and in conjunction with that, the MS4 permits related to stormwater releases from the community and contamination. We currently have 21 positions. We have 15 of those positions filled, and then the two Alliance positions. Bob is the operational manager and Brittany the admin assistant. But we are down a significant number of operators, and the one that concerns me the most are the treatment plant operators. Oops. There we go. So I thought perhaps it was time once again to talk about a little bit more of this central wastewater treatment plant, just as a reminder, because with COVID, we haven't gone out to visit those or had as many tours as we have in the past. It is under an MPDS permit. The permit renewal requirement was March 31, 2021, but as you may recall, we're currently doing water effect ratio analysis and some heavy metal work, the metal translator study, and that is to try to work with DNR on establishing reasonable limits on metals in the water, in the wastewater. Central Plant was constructed originally in 1949. It was upgraded in 2001. In 2013, they added the UV disinfectant for E. coli elimination, and in 2015, the lagoon was converted to an equalization basin. It is the location of the laboratory facility, and it is permitted for 3.08 million gallons of wastewater per day. Brushy Creek is the receiving stream. Large wastewater treatment plant was originally constructed in 1946. It is a trickling filter plant. It has only been updated one time in 1966, and it remains a trickling filter plant, and we do not have any E. coli disinfection, and we are under a schedule of compliance with MDNR as a result. And we are also under that same schedule of compliance for reduction in copper. That date is five years. E. coli is 10 years. We believe that the plant, given its age and the type of technology used, trickling filter. How many plants do you think were lost in Missouri? A handful? Yeah. Most other communities have closed already their trickling filter plants. This is the one that we've been talking to you about closing, as we have other issues at the plant as far as electrical and just overall condition. The concrete is beginning to decay, and we believe it's at its useful life end. The newest plant is the Southeast Wastewater Treatment Plant out on Goodwill Chapel Road. It was constructed in 1985. It is an activated sludge facility, and it does have UV disinfectant for E. coli elimination. It's a 2.6 million gallon per day permitted flow. It flows into Breakfast Branch as its receiving stream. We are under a schedule of compliance related to copper, and its effective date of the latest permit was April 1, 2009, and they told us five years from that, which is 2024. However, on this one, Bob, I do not know the time that we have exceeded what is in their schedule of compliance. One time? We haven't had a... Yeah. So even though they've established a schedule of compliance, we have never surpassed the current parameter, and we don't expect to in the future. And then we do have the Biosolids Composting Facility out on Highway U. It was built in 2010. It is a static violation composting facility. It does have a biofilter system installed. That's why you don't smell the facility when you travel out in that area. It does receive biosolids from all three of the wastewater treatment plants, and it is a Class A compost material that is produced at that site. So we do not have any other disposal of sludge at this time. It all goes through the compost facility. So the common goal is to meet the service needs of our customers and the environmental compliance requirements of the Missouri Department of Natural Resources now and into the future at affordable rates through sound business and financial planning. This is probably the single hardest compliance issue we have, is that rate setting on sewer, given the stringent requirements that are coming out from EPA and DNR. So the master planning will help us make sure that we can keep our rates as low as possible as we plan for the future. Let's see. So what have we been doing in 2022? All three operating permits were due this year. Air permit applications were timely filed. Tree management root control has been completed this year. That is a chemical treatment process. And we have also ground quite a bit of tree product out at the compost site. However, because of the bad weather last year, we still have a lot on the ground, and we will be asking for some additional budget authority for grinding in the coming year. Stormwater project on South Park and West 7th Street is scheduled to start before year end. We just have a couple of easements we need to get signed off on. Central Regional and Pelham Drive lift stations, the easement for construction is now in place, and construction was scheduled to start this morning at 7:00. Thompson Meadows North, the pumps have failed. We're operating on a rental mobile pump, and the delay in construction on that one has been caused by structures and the electrical components not being readily available on the market, but they are planning to start this week on that one also. Main Street Lift Station rehabilitation project will be completed within the next 45 days. Our master planning is nearing completion, and we expect a meeting, like I said, late January, early February. The RFQ for the central plant upgrade is coming. We're working between a couple of engineering firms who have a difference of opinion on the best way to upgrade. And our secondary lift station pumps that we recently approved have been ordered, but it will be 10 to 12 weeks before they can be delivered. And then master planning and hydraulic modeling, Burns and Mack are very close to completion. They identified some things that I think we're all aware, well aware, okay, the mouse isn't working, well aware of. The line that runs in tandem from about where the state fairground exits up the rail line and into our central plant has been identified as their largest concern because of overflow issues. So that is their number one on capital improvement planning, is to run another line in tandem with the existing to take care of that problem. But they have done a lot of work, both on flow analysis, just general looking at condition of equipment, and they have lots of information to provide, not all of it bad, which is, you know, the thing you want to hear on a master plan, is they believe we're going in the right direction. We just need to continue that forward. Let's see. Did I hit most of this? Most of the 2023 planning will be very similar to what we've done in 2022. With wastewater on an aged system, much of what we're doing is looking at the condition of pipe and determining what needs to be dealt with first and condition of pumps. And then we're very fortunate this year because we're also getting to look at some growth in the community that allows us to do some additional extensions on both sewer and water. And that's it. Any questions on wastewater?
Question, yes. When we abandoned that north plant after it's replaced, is that, could that be confirmed to a usable piece of property?
My immediate response is yes, because it is such an old plant. There should be a way to do that. There is a lot of foundational concrete there. So we're going to have to figure out exactly what they put into place and how we would get that removed. There is a full decommissioning process the DNR requires a city to go through, so we will have to decommission the plant before we do that.
On the compost facility, I have any questions asking, and you'd answer that to me, we need to get that certification from state or is that possible?
When EPA came in and did their latest inspection, they identified that the lab that we are using was not always being conscientious about getting their holding times met on Salmonella testing. So in the past, we would send it through, they'd get us a response, and we can move forward. Now, we have to verify that they met the holding times. If they did not, then the whole process of testing starts over. So periodically, we will have gaps where we may not have a finished product available. Okay?
All right. The next item I have tonight are for engineering services in regards to six stormwater projects we have. We need to reallocate some funding in the stormwater improvement master plan. This funding will help finish the detailed engineering services for the next six projects. Having these projects shovel-ready will help us receive grants and funding of these projects.
Any questions on that? That's it? Arlene, read the ordinance.
Bill number 2021-181, an ordinance authorizing a scope of services for engineering services related to design of stormwater drainage improvements.
Second reading.
Second. All right, favorit. I propose.
Bill number 2021-181, an ordinance authorizing a scope of services for engineering services related to the design of stormwater drainage improvements.
Second.
Roll call please.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
The third item I have tonight is in regards to the north plant. A cascade pump in the north wastewater treatment plant failed earlier this year, and we need to approve the purchase of replacing that pump.
Any questions on the ordinance? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-182, an ordinance authorizing a sole-source purchase of a cascade pump for the north wastewater treatment plant.
Second reading.
Second.
All right, favorit. I propose.
Bill number 2021-182, an ordinance authorizing a sole-source purchase of a cascade pump for the north wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Roll call please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
And Foster is absent, so that's seven yes and one absent.
Fourth item I have, in the last council session, we approved the grant for the tree re-inventory. This item, we need to approve the bid for the tree re-inventory itself.
Any questions about the ordinance? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021- Bill number 2021-183. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for a tree re-inventory of approximately 1,531 city park and right-of-way trees and 426 ash trees.
Second reading.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Bill number 2021-183. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for a tree re-inventory of approximately 1,531 city park and right-of-way trees and 426 ash trees.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent, and Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
And the final item I have tonight, in the replacement of the water media at the water treatment facility. As mentioned earlier, we found excess calcium buildup to the point of making it extremely difficult to remove. We have agreed to pay for half of the added expense because it should have been an anticipated expenditure.
Read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-184. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for additional labor for the City of Soudaya Water Filtration Plant Media Replacement.
Second reading.
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Bill number 2021-184. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for additional labor for the City of Soudaya Water Filtration Plant Media Replacement.
Final passage.
Roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Magus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster's absent. Bliss?
Yes.
And Lehman?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
That's all.
Name's Delvin Andrew Dawson. The first ordinance we have on the agenda that's before you is in relation to a fee schedule amendment. So if you recall, back in October, we passed the vacant residential property registry. What this does is it takes those amounts, which is $225, and incorporates that into our fee schedule.
Any discussion, counsel? Read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-185. An ordinance amending Section 10-614A registration fee and 10-614D billing procedures like penalties relating to vacant residential properties by incorporating said fees into the fee schedule.
Second reading.
Second. Call a favor?
Aye.
Bill number 2021-185. An ordinance amending Section 10-614A registration fee and 10-614D billing procedures like penalties relating to vacant residential properties by incorporating said fees into the fee schedule.
Final passage.
Roll call, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
And Oldham?
Yes.
Okay. Seven yes and one absent.
The next item we have before you is an ordinance rezoning 501 East 28, 505 East 28, and 2720 South Ingram. It's taking it from R1 to C1. Any representatives from Pioneer Properties here? If anybody has any questions. I believe that our plan is to do multifamily there and possibly some retail. This has been before planning and zoning, and they recommend it is approved.
Any counsel discussion? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-186. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R1, single-family residential, to C1, local business on certain property located at 501 East 28th Street, 505 East 28th Street, and 2720 South Ingram in the City of Soudaya, Missouri, in accordance with Chapter 64 zoning of the City Code of the City of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second reading.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Post?
Bill number 2021-186. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R1, single-family residential, to C1, local business, on certain property located at 501 East 28th Street, 505 East 28th Street, and 2720 South Ingram in the City of Soudaya, Missouri, in accordance with Chapter 64 zoning of the City Code of the City of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
And Dawson?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent.
The third item we have before you is an ordinance amending Chapter 16 courts by adding Article II administrative search warrants into the code of ordinances. So what this does is this creates a process by which staff can go in and if they refuse access to a property in order to abate it, let's say, for example, abate some trash, remove some trash, they can go to the courts. They can present their probable cause and get a warrant to go in and abate that nuisance. It's good because, one, it gives us a process through which to work and gain compliance. And then, on the other hand, you're preserving the resident's Fourth Amendment rights and their right to due process.
Any counsel discussion? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-187. An ordinance amending Chapter 16 courts by adding Article II administrative search warrants into the code of ordinances of the City of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second reading.
Call a favor? Post?
Bill number 2021-187. An ordinance amending Chapter 16 courts by adding Article II administrative search warrants into the code of ordinances of the City of Soudaya, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
The fourth item we have is an ordinance for a property purchase. So the property is located at the northwest corner of North Veterans Memorial Drive and East Spoonfield Street. I believe it's 10 acres. The purchase price is $40,000. And what we're going to use that for is expansion of the cemetery and possibly the transload facility.
Any counsel discussion? Arlene, read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-188. An ordinance approving the purchase of rearland property located at the northwest corner of North Veterans Memorial Drive and East Spoonfield Street by warranty deed by the City of Soudaya, Missouri from Sandra Roberts.
Second reading.
Call a favor? Post?
Bill number 2021-188. An ordinance approving the purchase of rearland property located at the northwest corner of North Veterans Memorial Drive and East Spoonfield Street by warranty deed by the City of Soudaya, Missouri from Sandra Roberts.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
The fifth item I have is a property purchase at 404 East Second. So this is a home that was deemed as a dangerous building. Went through the Board of Appeals process, and it needs to be demolished, is what the Board of Appeals ended up... The conclusion they ended up coming to. So Mayor Cady and staff, I think, have purchased this property for future use.
Any question, counsel? Read the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-189. An ordinance approving the purchase of property located at 404 East Second Street by warranty deed by the City of Soudaya, Missouri from Brett T. Booth and Eva M. Booth.
Second reading. Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Bill number 2021-189. An ordinance approving the purchase of property located at 404 East Second Street by warranty deed by the City of Soudaya, Missouri, from Brett T. Booth and Eva M. Booth.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
If you notice that we had that... Kelvin had that on the screen, that property on the... By the cemetery. You notice the significant overgrowth there. This would be quite a project to clean that up. It'll be a goal to... And it's been... And it habitats a lot of difficult situations.
I heard Lehman say he's going to volunteer to take a push mower through it.
Yeah. A lot of overnight cancers there, wasn't there?
And some illegal activities other than that. Liquor licenses, Arlene?
We have one new license this evening. It's a special event license for Jamie Lewis doing business at the Heroes Restaurant and Pub at 107 West Pine, Warrensburg, Missouri. The special event will be at the Foundry 324 for a wedding venue on January 1st, 2022.
Motion to approve?
Call a favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anybody from the... Any city council members, city administrator? Would you like to make a few comments here?
Just a reminder and also to the public, our strategic planning process will be January the 8th. That's the second Saturday in January. This is kind of our annual process of getting together with counsel and all the department heads. It's the result of all of these strategic plans that we've been setting through, all of the presentations, and hopefully bring that to summary and work with counsel to develop what priorities we want to look at going forward for the next couple of years. And then beyond that, just Merry Christmas to everybody and have a healthy and happy prosperous new year.
Thank you. We're going to meet... We're going to meet at the car section?
Here.
Here.
I thought you would. No, I'm... We'll have some food brought in.
We used to be the farm, and we used to make drinks.
Yep.
So good will for Bishop Paul Jones. Would you like to make a comment? Anybody else? Rock McCombe. Bishop Paul, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Bishop Paul Jones. I'm a pastor here in the community. And I have some concerns. I've had some people in the community come to me and ask me to find out some information about the Mercy Rest Stop and where it's going to be located. There are some people that have signed petition. I'm here to present it to the council this evening, stating that they are in opposition to the Mercy Rest Stop being placed on West Pedestre on the north side. They also stated to me and also stated on this petition with their signatures that they are not against the Mercy Stop project. They're just against the location and asked to be brought to the city council and made the city council aware and the mayor aware that they are requesting that more information be distributed to the people in that residential area because they're concerned that this is going to turn into a homeless shelter versus what it's being said is about. So I'm here tonight... Excuse me. I'm here tonight to speak for the people that have come to me. There's a lot of elderly people that live in that area, and they are concerned for their own well-being. They're concerned whether or not this would be a need for more law enforcement patrolling of that area, which can bring about financial distress on the city because they have to have people. So that's about all I've got to say. Yes, sir.
Have they said where they'd like to see it? Bill?
Sir?
Have they said where they would like to see it? Bill?
No, they have not said. With the recommendations for meetings, there are somewhere that they would be receptive to having someone from the organization come in and give them a better explanation of what's going on because there are so many rumors about what it is going to be and what it's not going to be. And all people want is a good understanding. And if someone would... There's openings for a community meeting, a neighborhood meeting, to let the people better explain what's going on because there's so many different conceptions of what's going on that is causing confusion.
Right, sir.
And if...
Councilwoman Bogus had a good town hall meeting. I would call it the church has representation. Maybe that's something we can do.
So there are some people that have said that they would even sponsor as well as welcome a neighborhood public forum type thing to get a better explanation.
I would tell you, it's our concern, for sure, that this is something that's a step probably in the wrong direction in a place for people to be able to sustain themselves for a longer period of time, housing-wise, get some traction, get a job. This is kind of the interim area, plan or interim whatever. I think the next step we need to make before we do that is kind of have some short-term housing available somewhere, and then these individuals then can process through their life, whatever, just react themselves, get a job. They have family, they have jobs there. But I'd like to have that discussion with everyone. I think it's important. And none of us object to what the goal is, I think, of all this real life. The ultimate goal is to provide some housing if needed. How we do that, there's no answer.
Well, we suggest that we work together and try to come to an amicable compromise that can better benefit everybody.
You know, I could see we could... Kelvin and I were just talking about a tiny house complex. Maybe in where we have the City Housing Authority. I've had discussions with the Housing Authority. They're not in favor of this, but I think we can change that culture.
Have any of the neighbors been contacted by anybody from Mercy Rest Stop?
No.
That's one of the things that I am here to bring about is that there's no... To my knowledge, sir, there's been no one that has tried to set up any kind of information to inform people around that area that this project is about to become a reality. And that's why I'm... That's why they asked me to come and ask the city council and the Mercy Rest Stop people to come together and talk to the community and give the community better information because better information gives better understanding, and better understanding gets progress on the move.
Bishop Paul, thank you. I could take a petition and give it to Arlene, and they can...
And it's been going on for the last couple of weeks, and there are still people that are prepared to, if necessary, get more signatures if need be to allow... To get information out. All the people are asking for is a good understanding, sir. All they're asking for is to be well-informed about what's coming into their neighborhood.
And we've had several confusing descriptions of what's going on.
That's what I'm saying. There's two or three different... They say it's going around. So the folk want to know what is going to be done and from the people that are proposing to do it. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. I'll have this for you if the, you want this now to...
Well, you can, yeah, you can. That's it. Mr. Newbill, thank you for coming.
Yeah, my name is Aaron Newbill. At one time, my brother, he was on this council. I lived in that neighborhood. I don't really have to, you know, live there, but I do. Um, I found out about this from Mr. Swander who runs, used to be the old overhaul factory. And he was asking me about it and I told him I didn't know nobody had contacted me about it because in that area, if you notice, they are, that old Lammy's building, they building all that up. There are people now that are living in tents all up and down through there. Uh, the city has gone so far, maybe y'all know, they got signs up, this property is owned by the city of Soudaya. You know, so that tells me right there, they don't want that in that neighborhood. I've lived all over this country and I've never seen a homeless shelter in a neighborhood. See, what a lot of people don't understand is when you start talking about a homeless shelter, and I hope, I don't know what they wanna do there, but that gets on the internet and people from all over the state, they see that. And they see it's a free homeless shelter and they'll migrate here. And you've got people coming from all over the place and you've got that right now. Even with that free food place over there, I bet you, you can't count five people that live in that neighborhood that go there and eat. Most of those people coming from all over the place, you know. They even got trucks that stay there all night, you know, uh, people up all night. Now, it's fortunately, it's not about elderly people there because a lot of the houses been tore down. But I see people twelve, eleven o'clock at night, you know, walking up and down through there. And they live there on that parking lot. But my concern, I could care less about the people, but my concern is you don't put a shelter in the neighborhood. If you wanna do something, you, like you were saying, you put so many houses there. About fifteen to twenty years ago, Rose Nolan, who was the city treasurer here, and some of y'all know her. We had an organization, we went to Jet City and talked to them. We, we wrote a grant and they came to Soudaya. But they'd never been on the north side. They said they thought Soudaya was one of the prettiest places they've ever been because they always went down Broadway, but they said they never turned north. And when they came on the north side, they proposed to build twenty-five new houses. The only problem was when they built the housing projects out there, which I called, that messed the whole black neighborhood up. But a lot of people didn't have deeds to their houses because they wanted to buy the houses and build new ones. And y'all probably don't even know this, but it was a federal, uh, actually ended up being a federal, uh, grant. But anyway, I'm opposed to it because I know, you should take the example of Columbia, Missouri. Columbia is one of these cities where it's a health and a college town. And they give away a lot of stuff, they help a lot of people. But probably a fourth of the people in Columbia now are from St. Louis, homeless people because they know they can come to Columbia because they will get free food, they can get this and then get this. And it gets on the internet and homeless people, they communicate each other. And if you open a homeless shelter, I'll guarantee you fifty to sixty percent of the people that live there are not even from this area. I don't know how many homeless people that live in Soudaya, but I guarantee you, if you go down there where they have that free food at, most of those people are not even from Soudaya. They just come in when it's time to eat and then they leave, you know. So, I don't know this, who's in behind this because nobody has contacted me. The only way I knew about it is with Mr. Swander that runs Lammy and turned Lammy's in there. And he was saying, I'm trying to better this area. And I don't know if any of y'all been in that place down there since he changed it, but that's a big parking lot there. If I wanted to go there and eat good food and all that, I wouldn't want all these homeless people walking up and down the street and tents over here and tents over there and in and out, you know. My niece in Minneapolis is a homeless person. She doesn't have to be, she just happened to be a schizophrenic. And she knows every trick in the book. She came to, she was from Missouri, but she came to Missouri and she got stuck in Kansas City. And she got on their phone within ten minutes. She knew where every homeless shelter was in there because the other homeless people were telling her that. You go there, go to Soudaya in Missouri, they give away good stuff, you know. You don't have to do nothing, you know. And I've never even been in that free food place. But when I, my dad died when I was ten years old, my family's never been poor. But he taught us, you know, if you ever get poor, this is how you do things. And I see people down there are just as healthy than I am. And for that neighborhood, that, if you'd have seen that neighborhood twenty-five years ago, there was all houses there, you know. You know that, Mr. Katie. Uh, now you start putting in one homeless shelter. In Columbia, all the home, if they do have, all the homeless shelters in one area and it's on one street, not in the neighborhood. But they're having more murders there, they're having more crime there, and this is what's gonna happen, you know. I lived in Detroit and...
Mr. Newbill, I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah.
And they, we, 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 we hear you.
Yeah.
And they think we understand, and Tina's a great spokesperson.
Well, no, I'm not talking about Tina. No, I'm not talking about this because Tina's on the thing. I'm just saying, from me, you know. It's just like, stuff like when you have the cleanup every year of all the trees and stuff. I don't know why you do it every year. Why don't you just, just put some signs up, say, five hundred dollars fine if you dump in this alley.
We're, we're trying to address that, that's a good point.
But that's, that's second. I mean, the sign don't cost nothing because people were sitting in that alley on couches, eating, you know. I walked my dogs through there and there were people sitting back there, eating and all that. And if you don't live there, I don't even have to live in that neighborhood. But you know me, I'm gonna say what I got to say, you know. And I know a lot of you don't wanna hear it, but that's where I am. I'm a Newbill. My family came to this town and ran this town. So, that water she talking about, my family owned that property. We sold that property to this city, you know. So, it's, I'm just saying, I'm against it and there's a lot of people that are against it. And like I say, it would be nice if y'all could figure out who these people are that's trying to do that, but I don't know. Nobody's ever asked me, you know. And I know if Mr. Swander doesn't know what all the money he's got, because he asked me and I told him I had an idea. So, you know, if somebody could find out and let the community or have them have a meeting and tell us what they're trying to do, then it's a different story.
Thank you, Mr. Newbill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
But I always gonna be talking, huh?
Okay, that's good. Anyone else like this? Come on up. Please, uh, state your name and your address.
Okay. Uh, my name is Bob Molyneux. Uh, my wife and I bought a house at thirty-one oh five Skyline Drive. We live in, uh, Southwest Village. In fact, we live on the corner that the lady over there was talking about just a little while ago, the corner of Skyline and Plaza. Uh, two years ago, in two thousand nineteen, we had the approach to our driveway replaced because every time we exited that driveway, we dropped in the gutter and we hit the front of our car on the street. So, we had to approach it, re-approach, or torn out and put a new approach in there. Uh, well, last week, the city came and tore our approach out and basically put a concrete ditch in front of our house that we have to drive out. And now, I mean, no matter how slow we go coming out, there's no way to avoid dragging my wife's car anyways. I drive a truck and I can avoid it if I go slow enough, but she drags no matter, I mean, comes to a stop and you can see her car sitting on the concrete. Uh, and the person who did it for the city and the person who did it for me told the city at the time, one of the people from the street department, the guy, the contractor the city hired, told one of the guys from the street department, there's no way that he's gonna be able to make that a usable approach because the, uh, storm gutter system on the street sits so far below the level of the street that he had to put that ditch in there that we can't use. It's basically, like I said, it's a ditch. It's five or six foot wide and it's probably a twelve-inch difference in height from one side to the other. And, uh, we cannot, we just can't use it. But you can see all through the area of Skyline, of Southwest Village where people have had to put something in their driveway to keep from hitting on the street or something. And so, we had it, we just had concrete poured and had it taken out. There's other people that put asphalt in it or taking bags of concrete and put concrete in it. Uh, but all through the, the condition of the gutter is in such bad shape all through this subdivision that the water doesn't flow. It stands and then it eventually soaks into the ground because concrete's all cracked and, and broken up, which is what it did. Ours was higher, probably seven or eight inches higher than the gutter by the time it was done. I have a package of pictures here. I mean, and they're just not focusing on my driveway. They're all through Southwest Village, if you care to look. Uh, where water's standing in the gutter all through. There's, there's two sets of these. Well, I believe my wife talked to you, Mr. Katie, and, uh, her name's Amy, and, and I know she talked to Mr. Bliss and I talked to Ms. Foster. And, uh, you know, it was still done and I, I don't wanna say, you know, what we, what we had done was probably a little bit overkill. He didn't put any kind of, uh, slope or anything. There was nothing, no way for the water to pass at all. So, it was a little deep on the uphill side. But you'll see in one picture there on the corner of Skyline and Plaza, which is the highest point in Southwest Village. And all, all the roads leading from the corner of Skyline and Plaza go downhill from there. And the, the corner right in front of our house on the, uh, southeast side, uh, just holds water. It doesn't flow at all. And that's not because of our driveway, that's because of the condition of the storm drain. You'll see one, one picture on Southwest Boulevard, down by where the south wing comes out on Southwest Boulevard, where there's brand-new concrete there in the middle of the driveway, there's probably a foot-wide puddle all the way across the driveway. And that's brand-new concrete that the city just put in. So, it's holding water. I mean, it's just, and, or I think, you know, they just, they just finished, uh, replacing the water line at the street, at the house right across the street from us. And, uh, it's gotta be because there's so much groundwater soaking in right there that the water, that the ground's shifting and stuff. So, we're not, it's not flowing. That needs to be one of the places that they address in their stormwater drain improvement. And then maybe we can make a driveway that'll actually work for all of us, you know, because we're damaging our vehicle every time we exit our driveway. And we try to prevent that from happening, but...
What was your address again?
Thirty-one oh five Skyline Drive. And I talked to, uh, Mr. Paz, who's the city engineer, and, you know, we basically got nowhere before it got done. And so, now I'm trying to talk to you about, you know, maybe we can make it right after, if we can get the gutter fixed, we can get it to where we can use the driveway. Right now, you can go in, but you can't go out.
You know, Mr. Bliss, I know I've been there. I know it's, you know, we're, you're the ones who are happy with the cost of it. Do the best you can to address this issue.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see it work out for all of us because I'd, I mean, there is a way it could have been done to where we could have used it, you know, if we would have just fixed the gutter part of the way up. You know, the city came in and they, they, they put, they hired the contractor and they paid the guy to come in and do it. You know, he didn't need to take out everything that he did. He could have just done the end of it and then fixed the gutter back up there to where the water would have drained, you know. Just enough of a slope and, uh, in order for him not to have to take out our driveway, he would have had to go all the way to the corner, but it could have been done a little bit different. I think for the same amount of money, it could have been done to, to everybody's satisfaction.
Well, we appreciate you coming in. We hate to have you have to be concerned about it, but we can get it resolved.
Well, I'm sorry that, you know, you came to it in the first place. You know, I wish it would have been done right the first time. We couldn't, we could have done it right the first time, but like I said, there wasn't any way. He could have made it usable for us and still met the requirements the city had. And he probably, like I said, he probably did a little bit of overkill and built it up a little bit too high. He could have done a little bit better of that, but we did come out and meet the street. Problem is that the gutter is at least three inches below the level of the street and probably three or four inches below the level of our yard. And it's lots of examples all through Southwest Village that are like that.
Sorry to believe that subdivision is now, now probably seventy years old?
Uh, it's, uh, yeah, sixty years old. Our house was built in around nineteen sixty. Yeah. And it had been empty for several years when, when we bought it and, you know, so...
Thank you for coming in.
Well, I do, I appreciate you listening to me and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to get this all straightened out. Thank you.
Kevin, I have a question. Anybody else?
Your honor, hearing done. I motion for closed-door session for legal advice, real estate transactions under the Missouri reside, uh, rise statute of six ten, sections one and two.
More crosswinds?
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Foster's absent and Bliss?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Yes, and I'll send that. Joe wanted a copy of it.
I'll send it to Kevin out there, you mind?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay. Ah. Ah. That day, that, yes, yeah, you can get a walk on it.
Is he aware what's coming this way?
Uh, thanks for the gift card and the real letter. Yeah. Let's go down and have a drink and read it.
Motion to open session?
Lehman? Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Foster's absent and Bliss?
Here.
Do we have to, are we voting on anything? Okay, that's what I thought.
Did I? Did I? Okay, I didn't realize, look at girls do that, but I gotta read two ordinances. Okay, the first one is bill number twenty twenty-one dash one ninety. An ordinance approving the acceptance of quick claim deeds for properties located at one ten South Osage Avenue, two oh one West Main Street, and two oh three West Main Street in the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second reading, second.
I oppose.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one ninety. An ordinance approving the acceptance of quick claim deeds for properties located at one ten South Osage Avenue, two oh one West Main Street, and two oh three West Main Street in the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second.
Ward, please?
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman? Lehman?
Yeah, two.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster's absent?
So, we have-
Seven yes and one absent. And the last one is bill number twenty twenty-one dash one ninety-one. An ordinance approving the acceptance of a quick claim deed for property located at two oh two West Main Street in the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second reading, second.
All clear? I oppose.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one ninety-one. An ordinance approving the acceptance of a quick claim deed for property located at two oh two West Main Street in the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second.
Ward, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Foster's absent, and Bliss?
Yep.
Seven yes and one absent. That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.